People think it's another scam.
I think it was made.
It's used to be true because this type of program. The scam, how it works is. You want to take this out here and the. Um, I'll take that to red or stay in. But really. I know this area and I'm here to get it. We have an office.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well. Yeah, well, and as we tell. Right, let's. That we can have four ladies that work for me down there. Make sure.
Oh, okay. No.
Yes. Oh. Yes.
That's why I got hired to come here. South of the yard. Yeah, they decided not to turn in their contract, I think, last year. Last year.
Good evening and welcome to our Sulphur City Council. At this time, I'd like to call this meeting to order. I'm gonna ask, um, Ms. Ashar, would you lead us in vocation? Mr. Nizat, would you put this in the plan of the meetings?
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you, Lord, for all of those that gathered here tonight. Help us to come together as a city. Help us put aside division, but union of community should be always our focus and goal. Dear Lord, we ask you to give your special blessings of all those poor people in Hawaii that are suffering. Help us to remember them daily in our prayers and our works. And may they find good presence of mind as we have had to in all our struggles from Hurricane Laura and past storms. Lord, we just thank you again and we praise you. And we ask you, Lord, to just guide us and give us wisdom as we continue to move forward. In your name we pray.
Amen. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Mr. Nizat?
Here.
Ms. Hardy?
Here.
Ms. Ashar?
Here.
Ms. Thomas?
Here.
Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Uh, I need a motion for the approval of then of our previous meeting. To move?
Second.
Do we need to vote?
Mm-hmm.
Please. Uh, Mr. Nizat?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Ashar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Approval of tonight's agenda, I'll need a motion to move for, um, to add on to number twenty-one B. International ordinance authorizing Mayor Danahay to sign a ten-foot wide drainage server to D S L D Homes LLC and Bellevan subdivision phase two.
Is this for A or B?
Twenty-one B. B. Can we get a second? Need to go do that. I need a motion and a second.
Second.
Do I ask?
Second.
Do I ask if there's any public comment?
Okay. Um, do you want them to read it first? Yes. So twenty-one B was read already?
I read twenty-one B.
So are there any comments from the public regarding twenty-one B? I know that both of these were added because the agenda was previously printed as noted for seven days. Any public comments regarding twenty-one B?
Yes.
She was hard three sixteen Con Street. Basically the same question that I do ask before these. We have something to add to the agenda according to the charter. It's supposed to be administrative only, not just method requirement coming in after. So how is this administrated?
Well, this was added because of, um, you know, it was part of what the mayor had required, requested, shall I say, an introduction. It's an introduction.
This is just an introduction?
Yes, ma'am. One, twenty-one B is an introduction.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? Okay, um, you need to vote on that one? Mm-hmm. Mr. Nizat?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Ashar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Okay.
I want to make a motion to add item twenty-one A, a resolution accepting substantial completion for making a drive rehabilitation phase two.
To move? Are there any comments from the public regarding twenty-one A?
Hey, Dane.
Okay, please vote. Mr. Nizat?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Ashar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Item number two. Tom Watkins, actually Mr. Dane Bergeron, Bergeron.
Do we need to make a motion to second to remove item number one?
I'm sorry, yes.
You can be remove item one and then adopt the amended agenda.
I'm ready to jump ahead here. So I do need a motion to remove item number one, um, which will be rescheduled, I believe, next month. And we will also include in that motion, adopt the amended agenda. So move.
Second.
Okay, please vote. Mr. Nizat?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Ashar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
And now a motion to accept. We're good. Okay. I'm a little rusty here, it's been a while. Okay, item number two, uh, Mr. Dane Bergeron, representing the South Central Planning and Development Commission, to speak regarding Restore Small Business Loan Program. Item I twelve dash twenty-three. Um, it was an invitation by me to, uh, present information. Mr. Bergeron, we welcome you.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, I'm Dane Bergeron with South Central Planning Commission. And the program that we're running is the Restore Louisiana Program for Small Businesses. The program is federally funded. It's through HUD to the Office of Community Development at the state. And we at South Central Planning are administering it. We're doing the intake. We are not the final approval of it. Uh, this program is designed for small businesses. It's not for the exons of the world, it's for your mom and pop businesses to help them met, uh, for unmet needs. It's not for restoring the building, that's, uh, that's an insurance issue. Um, there are some, uh, things on here, uh, it's in your pamphlet that the funds are to be used for. Monthly rent or mortgage, wage, lost wages, uh, utilities, inventory or equipment, uh, movable equipment and such. And there is, they have made some modifications to that. Uh, we're dealing with the state, so you know, we're kind of, uh, they, they see some things that they hadn't thought of. Uh, the program is, is, uh, is phenomenal, in my opinion. It's, uh, zero percent interest, no payments for six months, seven-year term. Loans can go from anywhere from ten thousand to a hundred fifty thousand. It can be as much as two hundred fifty thousand. Uh, we, they will make exceptions for, uh, bigger businesses. And there's forty percent forgiveness. That means if you pay sixty percent of the loan back and they're not in default, the other forty percent is forgiven. The federal government, after some of the issues with Katrina, they stopped giving out grants because it weren't being used for what they were supposed to be. Uh, and there's no closing or application fees. We have an office at the Seed Center. I have an office in DeRidder. And we have, also have one in Alexandria. Uh, and I have an asker for everyone here, please help us spread the word. The one, we've been in operation now for close to three months. Uh, it's starting to pick up, but, and I understand, I live in DeRidder, there were so many scams run in the past three years that people look at this and they think it's just another one. Why, and, and I've had that stated to me. Uh, my, I've, I've issued you all my cards, uh, the phone numbers on the back, they can apply online. And we will help them through the process. Do not call for anybody, uh, we, we had one customer a couple of weeks ago that somebody was gonna charge them four thousand dollars to do that. We do it for free. So, I mean, i- it's just non-stop. So, uh, please help us get this out there and help, uh, get this, uh, the community back on its feet where it needs to be. So, anybody have any questions to me?
Bring your pamphlet.
Yep. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
I'll leave all these texts. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bergeron.
We're good, but. Thank you, sir.
You can leave those with Ms. Harding or anybody wants to.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, item number three is a public hearing on ordinance granting a rezone to Stephanie Gill, two zero three West Thomas Street, from business to residential to allow for the continuance of residential use. Uh, ordinance ninety-four dash twenty-three is under my name, is in my district. Um, I'll need a motion. So move?
Second.
Um, are they here?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Do you, uh, do you have any thing, anything you'd like to say or plead your case?
Just that we're selling the property and we ran into the issue of being able to sell the residence because it's listed under a business zone. So we can't, they are not able to get a residential loan because it's in a district, business district. So we're wanting to have that rezoned back to residential.
Mr. Everham, you, you have this, a little more information on this?
Uh, yeah, so this, uh, this area is owned business, as you can see, the entire block is business. But in reality, it's all, uh, residential living.
Hmm.
Um.
Like, any comments from the public?
I have a question.
Yes.
I just have a question. For Austin, probably. That's only that corner, right? That's all we're all doing, are you doing that?
That's correct.
Okay, not doing the rest of it right now?
Not right now.
Right.
Any other comments? Okay, please vote. Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Ashar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Ellender? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Nizat?
Yes.
Item four is a public hearing on ordinance granting a rezone to Toccoe, to LLC one eight two five East Napoleon Street, from business to commercial to allow for warehousing, ordinance ninety-five dash twenty-three. It's under my name again, I'll need a. So move? Do we have anyone from Toccoe?
Give someone a second, he's had the end.
Okay. Do we have any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Austin, did you want to say anything regarding that?
Uh, this area is also business, um, we do have some residents to the south, but they're all facing the south. So it's not, uh, will be visually. A visual issue is created.
Mr. Don? Yep.
Um, yeah, so, like I said, this is all business, um, in the area, the, to the south is all residential. However, um, we did, uh, I did put a stipulation in there as far as only accessing, uh, the side from Holly Island, Holly Island. Um, no access from Carlin.
Any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Please vote. Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Ashar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Nizat?
The stipulation applies to, to over voting on that.
Yes, it's in there.
Okay, yes.
Item five is a public hearing on ordinance granting a rezone to BAD, B A D Rentals LLC SW Corner of East Burton and Palmetto Drive from residential to business to allow for an office with warehouse for the business. Ordinance ninety-six dash twenty-three, again, uh, my district, I'll need a. So move?
Second.
Austin, would you, uh, yeah?
Uh, so this is rezoned from residential to business, uh, I mean, to commercial, I'm sorry. Um, to the east, we have, uh, actually industrial use, um, and to the, uh, west and south is residential, that is the, uh, the sulfur housing.
And it's from residential to business?
Yeah, business.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
Residential, yes.
Any comments from the public?
I have another question.
Yes.
It's going from residential to business? They're talking about a warehouse.
No.
He's just said something about a warehouse, that's my question.
It's, it's, uh, warehousing for their, for that company, it's not warehousing anybody else's.
Business, don't bother.
Please vote. Ms. Hardy, here, if I may.
Yes.
So it was also noted, um, that we should consider restricting access connection to Burton Street.
Uh, yes, that's, isn't that what you said?
Yes.
And that's not currently in there, correct? Or is it already in there?
No, it is not in there. The buffer is, but. Okay.
Move, uh, or amend and add that.
I'll make a motion to amend and add, um, that we want to restrict the access connection to Burton Street. Does that sound high?
Questions.
Also, you're going to report to Gill with.
Um, yeah, no, I pretty much cleared it up, but it's, uh, it's essentially restricting the, the access to only Burton Street and not Sherwood. Alveda.
Alvanta.
Alveda.
Give someone a second. You didn't? Okay, so I'll do roll call on the amendment. Okay. Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Ashar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Nizat?
Yes.
And then this is for the adoption. Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Ashar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Nizat?
Yes.
Item six, extension for temporary housing and recreational vehicles due to damage caused by Hurricane Laura for the following addresses. A, to extend temporary housing in a recreational vehicle located at eight five one McArthur Street in accordance with ordinance number one six nine three, M C series, uh, again in my district. Just a minute.
Second.
So inspections have been completed and the work is still in progress? Is the owner here? Anyone from eight fifty-one McArthur? Do you see the notes? Okay. Um, any comments? Public, any public comments? I need a. Ready to vote, okay. Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Ashar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Nizat?
Yes.
Item six B, to extend temporary housing in a recreational vehicle located at one nine zero six Diane Drive in accordance with ordinance number one six nine three M C series. Ms. Ashar?
Is Mr. Hanks here? Is Mr. Hanks here? Pauline, if you heard, did they call? Okay, I'm gonna move that we put this off for a minute because I have, uh, some questions regarding inspections on this. And I'd like to see, uh, when inspections, the city does not have any recorded inspections of this property as of date. And I'd just like to know the progress, so we would understand, uh, what a fair extension of time. I know that the zoning board gave them, um, six months and I'm okay with that, but I, we need to have a report on inspections. And that's what I'm gonna move for for now.
Ms. Ashar? Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Ashar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Nizat?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Item seven, public hearing, hearing on ordinance amending chapter seventeen, article one, to provide for dead or diseased tree removal on private property and cost assessed against owner. Ordinance ninety-seven dash twenty-three. Um, I'm gonna need a motion and a second to amend. So move, since it's an introduction? Please vote. Ms. Ashar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Nizat?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Um, Mr. Bill LeBlanc? Sign, public comments?
Why are you, are you amending this thing now or you got to ask it? What, why are we amending?
I think it's, it's really enhancing it.
That, the amendment was for Kate, um, amendment today.
Madam Chair, just for clarification, um, I think this is something that after the last meeting, there was discussion that kind of led to the consensus that it would be a little bit better if there was a little bit more visibility to the accountability to the findings of the, of a diseased, uh, damaged tree. And so basically, all of the, all, the only amendment is one paragraph. All it says is, when the city administration finds the tree is worthy of coming down, that just like a condemnation, they'll do a show cause order and it'll come to the council. The council will make the decision as to whether the tree needs to be taken down or not. And then if you decide the tree needs to be taken down, they'll be given a period of time to take it down. Presumably, it defaults to thirty days, but of course, y'all can shorten it or lengthen it based on the circumstances. So all, all it's saying is, instead of just complaint comes in, notice goes out, person gets, you know, gets in trouble if they don't cut it down, it'll be complaint comes in, notice goes out, come to the council, council decides. If y'all decide it needs to come down, they'll have a period of time to take it down. And then if they don't take it down, then the stuff that was otherwise in the ordinance will apply. So that's the only amendment. The only amendment was a show cause hearing before the council and a period of time to register.
My concern is on East Line Street, you're not a child by the time you get through food and around. Because there's a tree over there that's about seventy-degree angle right now. It's gonna take out all electricity on that street if it doesn't kill a kid. Those kids walking up and down the school there every morning and every evening. And that tree could fall while we're in this building. It wouldn't take much. It's rotten, it's been rotten, I've taken Mike by there and showing him. That, that tree's got to come down before some child dies. There's a limb up there that would, would crush a car and could fall out of it at any time. The tree is probably sixty to seventy foot tall. It's, uh, probably eighteen inches in diameter. And I'm telling you, it's so rotten at the bottom, it's scary to drive by it. And I think something needs to be done now with that tree. Uh, the kids from K T School walk by there every day. I'd bother and look at it if you got, if you're brave enough.
What, what block is that on East Line? You know, about.
It's on the north side of the street, man, and, uh, my daughter's address is seven hundred. I'm, I'm guessing that the number's grew up coming that way. It's about midway to that street. You can't miss it, you know?
Eight hundred blocks somewhere in there.
Right in there, uh, I could probably, I'll get the information and call each one of you if you want me to. But that tree is gonna hurt somebody. You know, I'm, I'm afraid to drive by it right now. It's, it's, it's moved from about, about an eighty-degree angle to about a seventy-degree angle now. It's fallen, I mean, it's in the process of falling. The children walk by there every day with a pile of kids under, just a little while.
Thank you.
Mr. Don, I appreciate your comments. That was my exact purpose in, uh, proposing this ordinance and bringing it before the council and the city, uh, is because of the public hazard. As I've said before, it's not if a tree falls, it's when. And that's a very real question. Thank you.
That's the worst one I know of right now. There are several of them. I just hope we can get it in effect and enforce it.
Any other public comments? Please vote. Okay, so this is for the amendment, right?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Ashar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Nizat?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
And now a motion for the item, item seven agenda, uh, item seven hundred. With the amendment. I need a moment. Just a minute. Second. Can we please vote? Ms. Ashar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Nizat?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Item eight is a public hearing on ordinance accepting donation from Seeley Ratcliffe Swissco Road LLC for the lift station on Calcasio Industrial Drive, ordinance ninety-three dash twenty-three, Mayor Danahay.
Uh, yeah, so this is just, uh, a, a donation of the property where our lift station says essentially giving it right away to, uh, the other thing.
A motion and a second. So move?
Second.
Please vote. Mr. Nizat?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Ashar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Item nine is a public hearing on ordinance amending ordinance number one eight five one M C series to increase tie inspection fees for water and sewer, ordinance nine nine dash twenty-three, Mayor Danahay. We have a couple of people to speak.
Um, so this, uh, this is a, an, a tie-in inspection fee? Um, I think the previous, um, fee was fifteen dollars and it hadn't been addressed in a while. Um, I talked to, never mind. Yeah, so this is just an increase of fifty dollars to.
We have public comments, Mr. Bill LeBlanc?
Much are you increasing to?
Item nine, the tie-in inspection fees for water and sewer?
Fifteen to fifty.
Fifty. Fifty dollars. Sorry, I hear your question.
What kind of percent is that? Three hundred?
Yeah.
Fifteen dollars, fifty is big.
What was it before? Miss LeBlanc?
So, and a question, what was it, Christmas?
Joshua Baden. Baden, sorry. Please state your name and address.
My name's Joshua Baden, I live at six thirty Alabama Street in Sulphur. Uh, also Patriot Plumbing. I have an issue with the, the addressing the amendment thing on fifty-dollar increase whenever we have other issues. that y'all are failing to even acknowledge and look at throughout the city. We've got people that's got Westlake addresses, that's all up and down Highway ninety, all up and down Prater Road, that's utilizing our tax dollars, city water and city sewer, that's paying a flat rate, if I'm not mistaken, and hasn't, they're not paying a higher assessment on city water usage. So I think before we take an increase, a hit on the taxpayers that's in this community, they're gonna get hit with this anyway because when I go out to do a job, I'm gonna take and charge that customer for that fee. And so while I increase rates, that's gonna keep impacting our citizens whenever we need to take and adjust these other things for the people that's not paying taxes here first. I think that all needs to be taken into consideration and looked at before we take and adjust these rates on our own people. That's one issue with that. Second issue is there's people here in the city limits that's got commercial buildings, that's got one water meter feeding multiple commercial buildings. So I mean, at the end of the day and at the end of the month, whenever they take and get a water bill, how are we charging each business fairly? They're having to take and get amongst themselves and divide that, that water bill. And so if you have work that needs to be done on the water meter, or if I had to make a tie-in for one bill to make a repair, I mean, who's getting charged for it?
So your comments are not relevant to number nine, but you're, you're tying inspection fees in the water.
Sure they are. Absolutely. Sure is. And then this is, I'm just explaining to you why. If I make a tie-in on the water meter, make a connection, you have to come out and inspect it, correct?
Yes.
So who's getting hit with that inspection fee? If you have one, three businesses tied onto one meter, which one's responsible for it? I think that's pretty relevant.
I, I appreciate your comments. I, we have staff, uh, who's made and talked about this on uh occasion. And uh, we had long discussion back.
Right, absolutely.
And we've assured him that here, and we would, and that's, takes these concerns that he was brought in.
The only thing I just wanted to clarify is, Madam Chair, is that outside the city limits, people do pay a higher rate. They pay double the city rate for water and double the city rate for sewer if they have sewer. So anyone, Carlos, Mossville, West, you know, so forth and so on, um, you know, they, they are paying double if they're not in the city.
Okay.
And no, I support your comment. I am an advocate for water consumption and for folks being charged about water consumption, but.
Can I say something else to the sewer?
Yes, go ahead.
Alright, so being in a mountainous community on a daily basis, the city of Salford has got businesses right here in our community that's tied on, that's not tied on to city sewer, that's inside of our city limits, that's got treatment plants on commercial buildings, still dumping sewer into our right-of-way. And I can, I can take and show them to you. At any given moment, if y'all want, if y'all would like for me to take you on show to you, I'd be glad to because that's a definite, definite ordinance violation. If you're within three hundred feet, you're supposed to be tied on city water, city sewer. So this has been like this for years. This isn't something that just happened.
Could you provide the list of those addresses?
Absolutely, I've already given it to the mayor, showed it to him in the meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, you're welcome.
Any other public comments?
I do not have a motion, so.
Somebody? Please vote. Mr. Nazad? Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Abchar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Item ten is a public hearing on ordinance amending and re-adopting the general fund budget for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Ordinance one hundred dash twenty-three, Mayor Danahay.
Madam Chair, we uh make expenditure due to hurricane recovery uh in the intention that we also receive reimbursements of any money. It has a tendency to take our, our budget out of compliance as it is per the state legislative law. So this will adjust that to where we would make compliance with the legislative law.
And I understand it's because it's reimbursement and, and expenditures in between two fiscal years, so.
Correct, in different fiscal years, that's why you say it listed twice.
Right, okay. Anyone from the public wishes to speak? Anyone from the public? Please vote.
I need a motion and somebody?
Second. Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Abchar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Nazad?
Yes.
Item eleven, public hearing on ordinance amending and re-adopting the general fund budget for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Mayor Danahay. Basically the same comments. I need a motion and a second. Somebody?
Second.
Please vote. Ms. Abchar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas? Mr. Nazad?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Item twelve is an introduction of ordinance authorizing Mayor Danahay to sign amendment number one to the cooperative endeavor agreement with Calcasio Parish Police Jury for the extension of Carlos Boulevard between Wright Road and Begless Parkway. Original ordinance number one five zero nine M C series, ordinance now is one zero two dash twenty-three, uh, Mr. Abraham.
Um, so this is an amendment to a previous agreement for the extension of Carlos Boulevard. Um, when the, uh, the original agreement was, uh, was signed, uh, this, this area, um, was still, was not under, uh, in the city limits. Um, but now that area is within the city limits and we now need to pay a portion uh to have that street built. And that portion is a one point five million uh for an estimated five million dollar project. That was, uh, that estimate was from years ago, so it's probably gonna be even more. So I think this is a landing.
Anyone from the public wishes to speak? Anyone from the public? Please vote.
I need a motion and second.
Somebody?
Second.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Ellen? Uh, Mr. Nazad?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Abchar?
Yes.
Item thirteen is an introduction of ordinance declaring certain surplus movable property of the city of Salford and providing for the disposal thereof, scrap material. Ordinance one zero three dash twenty-three, Mayor. I need a motion and second. Somebody?
Second.
Please vote. Mr. Nazad?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Abchar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Item fourteen is an introduction of ordinance authorizing Mayor Danahay to sign emergency shelter and staging agreement with Orhart Parish School Board for temporary shelter and emergency equipment staging area at Singer High School for hurricane season twenty twenty-three, season for the city of Salford, ordinance one zero four dash twenty-three. Uh, Mayor Danahay.
Uh, this is an annual agreement that's, um, uh, we have to evacuate our personnel and machinery to safe places where we, we would stay.
I understand during hurricane Laura, we didn't have to.
We didn't have to do it during hurricane Laura.
Right.
But it was previous hurricanes they had.
Right. And we hope we don't have to.
We hope we never have to.
I need a motion. Somebody?
Second.
Please vote. Mr. Nazad?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Abchar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Item fifteen is a resolution granting a variance to Lawrence Domain. Sorry if I'm mispronouncing your name. Dominating eight twenty-one East Burton, sorry. To allow for sixteen by eighty mobile home to be greater than ten years of age, the age is nineteen ninety-eight. Uh, resolution forty dash twenty-three, uh, Ms. Keller isn't here tonight. Um, are you here, the Mr. and Mrs.? Would you go to the podium if you'd like? Okay, you're good? Do we have any? Well, let's get a motion in a second. Somebody?
A second.
And here is the pictures. Comments? Anyone with comments or questions?
There was notes on that two mobile homes are moved. What was the notes on the previous image? Two mobile homes are gone. What does that explain?
Um, they're vacant lots.
Oh, those, those lots, those mobile homes are no longer there. Okay, so alright.
Any questions for the council?
So it's moving to eight twenty-one East Burton, that's what you're asking.
Right. Where the two mobile homes were, that it's vacant and one mobile home moved there. Okay.
Let's see the, uh.
Yes.
See the bigger?
Alright. All the homes are gone. Okay, let's look at the mobile home again, would you? Any comments from the public? Did I get a motion in a second?
Uh, yes, you did.
Please vote. Mr. Nazad?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Abchar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Item sixteen is a resolution.
Is it too late to add a stipulation? Is there scurrying that, that mobile home moves, it has to be?
That's in the ordinance.
Yeah, they'll have to follow the ordinance.
Okay.
They have thirty days. Where are you? Oh, you have thirty days to put the skirting on once it's moved there.
Yes.
When y'all approve a mobile home, how do y'all know the one that y'all approved in the pictures is the one that actually gets put on the law?
The inspector.
That was, that was. They showed it. They showed it.
That's the mobile home, but yeah, his, his point was once it's moved, how do we know that's the one moved there? Is that what you said?
Yes, ma'am.
So the inspectors go out. Any other questions, comment? We've already voted on that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Item sixteen is a resolution granting a variance to Ronnie Hussein, one five zero seven Weekly Road to allow for a four hundred and eighty square foot manufactured home rather than the six hundred square foot. Um, resident R E S, uh, forty-one dash twenty-three, Mr. Nazad?
Um, Mr. Hussein, would you? Would you like to give us a background of what's going on here?
Please state your name and your address.
Ronnie Hussein, two fifty oh seven Weekly Road, South Olusia, seven oh six six three. Uh, that might be green mobile home that's damaged, Hurricane, uh, Laura, right? Yeah, so in the back I have this small FEMA trailer in the back. I'm using it right now. In the process, I'm working on the house. That's our current situation.
Okay, I know, I know you have, um, FEMA involved as well as Restore Louisiana and they were asking for you to provide some documentation showing the works being done on your house. Have you done that?
Yes, sir, yes. I'm working on it and as a matter of fact, I'm giving them updates every month.
Okay, um, has he, has he pulled permits and started with the offer?
Uh, still they authorized my funding, but still they're waiting on to see who I'm gonna use to do my work.
Okay, so, so you technically haven't started. You started the search process, I guess, to try to find contractors, is that what you're saying?
It's all depends on their side, their, their ball, they are calling. They say I'm appropriate with the money.
Mm-hmm.
In the same time, it's like in between. So I have all the contractors ready to move in there as long as the funding is, they say yes, go ahead. Yeah, it's, it's allocated, but it's not given to me.
So, so the funds have been allocated but not received?
Yes.
By you, Mr. Hussein? Um, there are a lot of moving parts to this one.
I think you, I think you had a permit from Rita, right, in oh six?
Yes, ma'am, I have apartment on the big house and I'm working on it because it has been a meter time. They, they never gave me nothing.
Well, right, Mr. Hussein, that's my concern is that no work's been done since Rita.
Yeah, it got like a, that roof, is the roof, right?
You got, you got roof replaced, replaced, some inside flooring replaced. Yes, now we're talking about since Rita or, or Laura?
Laura.
Okay.
It's the roof, that roof, I get it, that one.
There were no permits.
Okay.
So, Nick?
Yes, ma'am.
Or Mr. Hussein?
Yes.
You're talking about the green building? Is that the one you, would you want to move? I'm, I'm kinda confused of what's new. I mean, there's a blue building, there's a home, there's a green building, a blue building. Looks like a different color structure behind that.
Right.
Yes.
He, he, he got the green, I mean, in fact, if I'm not mistaken, after Rita, correct?
Two thousand.
Before Rita?
Before Rita.
Okay. And the one behind it is the current residents that you're staying in now from FEMA.
Yes, sir.
So you're telling me that the, the large main structure?
I was working on it slowly, slowly.
If that's been since Hurricane Rita? That's been since Hurricane Rita in two thousand and five?
Yes.
The big one, two-story building is damaged Hurricane Laura.
In Laura, so, so all of these other structures were there before Laura? Or did they come because of Rita? There's, there's a lot of moving parts, right?
Okay, the little house in the back FEMA trailer, this came after Hurricane Laura.
After Laura, okay, got it.
Yes.
Which house, what was damaged during Rita? The, the two-story?
No, that's, that's.
The green?
The green one was damaged?
Yes.
During Rita?
What's the age of that green one?
It's pretty old.
I can see that.
That's the reason I'm working on the big house.
And currently it's used for storage, if I'm not mistaken, green.
Yes, yes, sir.
And where you want to move that to? You want to move it?
He's not wanting to move the green one, he's residing in the, the smaller one in the back.
The four hundred and eighty square foot is the one he's residing in and he's asking to allow that one to remain.
And until he works on the, uh, actual stick-built home, the, the two-story home, uh, the funds won't be released to him from Restore Louisiana. Am I, am I correct in that?
Uh.
Based on the emails from?
Yes, sir.
Restore Louisiana?
What I'm, my plan is to move in the big house.
Right.
But now the situation is like, I'm in limbo.
Mm-hmm.
Because fund is allocated, they're, they have constructions, uh, branch they have. So I'm talking to them and they say, they'll let me know which contractors I can use. Local contractors or their contractor out of Bay Harbor. So it's all slow, it's going slowly, 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 slow, slow, slow. It's not that fast.
And, and another thing too, if I'm reading the email correctly, you have to pay for the project prior to the program awarding funds to reimburse you, correct?
That's right, they have different rules now, there's changes every time you go there.
So are you able to afford to do that work?
Yes, sir, I can, yes, sir, I can. Because what I'll do, I'll get loan against my house and I'll work on it as it grows.
Madam Chair, if I may, so I'm just a little, the green mobile home that's on the property, was that there before the house?
Yes.
Okay, so first it was the green mobile home, then you started building your home. Rita hit, were you living in the home prior to Rita?
Yes.
Or you were, okay, so Rita hits, you were living in the mobile home, you had damage. Did you ever move it back into the home after Hurricane Rita?
Yeah, I used my own money to fix the greenhouse, then I started working on the big house.
Oh, no, but I'm talking about the actual house, house?
The big house.
After Rita, did you ever move back into the big house?
No, ma'am, no, it's inside, it's not done, it's outside.
So it's never been done?
Never been done.
And you've been repairing it since Hurricane Rita?
No, Hurricane Laura.
Okay, so Rita, Rita was in eighteen years ago. You've, you've lived in this house?
The greenhouse.
In eighteen years?
The mobile home.
The past eighteen years.
That is correct.
Okay, she's talking about the big house.
I'm talking about the big house. Have you ever lived in the big house?
No, ma'am, it's nothing is done inside, outside is done.
When did you start building that?
Two thousand six.
After Rita?
Yes. Does that thing?
No, I would like to say, I think, uh, what he's asking for here is, uh, temporary living while he repairs from there.
That, that one's gonna be my next question. And, and my concern is the fact that you resided for eighteen years on the house and I don't think we can go another eighteen years with you living in, in the mobile home.
with you living in, in the mobile home.
Um, the ultimate goal is to get your home built and, and you'd be residing and, and you won't have to worry about it, you can get rid of the FEMA trailer.
That is correct.
But the history has shown, we're at eighteen plus years, that the house has been vacant.
You see, like, different people have different way of financing.
Wait, that's a good question, is, is the FEMA trailer loaned to you right now through the FEMA program, or did you purchase it?
Loaned to me.
Okay.
I gave it right, everybody.
Did you follow the, um, request to get permits to move it there? Did you get a permit to move the trailer?
The FEMA, FEMA?
You got a permit?
No, FEMA, FEMA, I applied for a permit.
FEMA?
FEMA, doesn't FEMA require our approval to let you keep it longer?
It depends, how long you're using your, uh, and working on your house.
Well, and that's my concern, is that FEMA, we have so many moving parts involved. Um, but again, I, I don't, I don't.
Is there, is there a term on your FEMA trailer? Usually the FEMA, well, the program usually is running about eighteen months, is that correct? How long have you been in that, that, that temporary FEMA trailer?
Almost two years.
At some point in town, they're gonna want to reclaim that mobile home. And then you're gonna be forced to do something else.
In, in my case, what they decided, they decided, as long you work on the house, show some improvements, you can use it.
And I, and I see that in the emails, Mr. Hussein, saying that, that they're showing, but they, they haven't received that, and that was their concern, that they haven't shown any construction or, or work being done.
They don't, the FEMA inspectors, they comes every month, and they, they allow you six months more.
You, 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 you're prob, I, I think I was referring to the Restore Louisiana, not the FEMA, so you're, you're correct, I apologize.
FEMA eventually is gonna come for their mobile home.
Right. Well, and that's, that's the concern, Mr. Hussein, um, if, if, if we go sixty days and show substantial progress.
Look, let me just say this to make sure you maybe understand, you are not allowed to have a trailer that you live in on the same lot as a house. Can't have two dwellings on the same lot.
I understand.
So, that green trailer cannot be your permanent residence while an unfinished house sits next to it for years and years and years and years.
Okay.
The house has to be finished, and you have to move into the house. So, so at the end of the day, whenever this FEMA trailer issue is over, you have to finish and move into the house. Or sell the house to somebody who can finish it and move somewhere else, that's, that's basically, the law does not allow you to have a construction zone and live there. You can have a construction zone and live somewhere else, but you can't have a construction zone and live in that little trailer at the same time, in the long run. Now, this is about the short run, but they're trying to make sure you understand, in the long run, you can't do that.
So what you're trying to understand, sell the whole land and leave, or move out?
May I ask you a question? Do you have working plumbing in that, in that new structure?
No, ma'am, I'm working on it.
You have that with more channel, you don't have faucet or anything in there?
No, they have only slab done, framing done, roof done, sagging plumbing, air conditioning work, electrical work.
Do you have power connected in there?
Yes, no, no.
And this was built in two thousand and six?
Yes, the thing is, I'm working on the, on the house with my own money, I borrowed money and, you know, old money. So now this, uh, restore money will help me to finish the whole thing off. Of course, I'll get of that green trailer, also FEMA trailer, right, I'll get of that. So, thing is, this takes time, that's the situation right now, I'm not planning to live like this all my life, not at all. If things are real bad, I'll sell this land to, to Restore Louisiana, I'll move out, you know, so no, no big deal.
Yeah, we're not trying to run you out of town by any means, Mr. Hussein, we, we're just trying to make sure that, um, everything is done properly and timely. And that's, that's the thing that we're running against right now, so we wanna make sure that you go forward from this, from today, with, I don't know how many hands you got in the basket between Restore, FEMA and us, um, but you do it properly and follow, and, and I think the first thing you can do is by getting in touch with, with, uh, you know, uh, the, the administration to see what permits you can get started on, plumbing, things like that, I know Mr. Baden's here, he's a plumber, uh, you may be able to speak with him. Um, there, there's a lot of things you can probably get started now, that would show improvement, that we can justify you staying there. But being that it's been so long that the house is almost, you know, eighteen years and it's never been completed, we're, we're kind of in a difficult situation.
I understand that, you have wanted, you want, you, you.
May, may I ask another question? How many inspections has, have we done, has the city done that?
They've got none.
None? None? Have you ever called the city for, have you done your permitting, and you never called them up to do inspections?
Yes.
Through the city?
Yes, yes, as a matter of fact, the sliding inspector.
Do y'all have permitting for that?
City says there's none, you have no permits.
The city, the city's saying no.
How many permits have you been applying for by then?
Or long expired?
They're long expired.
We have no record of any inspections being completed on anything.
It may have happened fifteen years ago, so.
It did, in oh-six, it got a permit, but that's.
Our records, they don't show when that was passed.
But that's expired, yeah, that's. So the permit was issued, but there was no inspection performed on any of the finished work.
You have to call and say I'm ready, Inspector, before, I guess you have to call.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, may I, okay. Plumbing, electrical, anything will be done, will be inspected by the city, must, you know, you know, of course, there'll be licensed plumber, licensed electricians, they'll do the work. My kids, right, so I'm doing it by the code. And second thing is that, my financial situation is not big enough to put all the money in my pocket, that's the reason I'm working on it. Reason being, I can live with this, that green trailer for life, if I want to, but I don't want that, I would see you to suffer having nicer house.
No, I wanna make sure you understand, you cannot live in that green trailer.
Right, right.
But, no, 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 no.
It, it can't be on that lot.
It has to be removed, that's correct.
It can be moved somewhere where it's allowed to be.
It has to be removed.
But it can't be on that lot.
I, I understand that, your point, but, but, but thinking, my portion is, I can live in that trailer all life, instead of building a house, I can, right? It's okay, it's fine with it.
Not during that lot?
No. I can't, no, no, what I'm saying, if I don't have the house, I can live in the trailer, right?
Well, that's what you're here for, you're asking us, can you say the, or?
Thing is that, I, I want the city to look good, I want see you to have a nicer house, nicer place, right, that's what I'm doing.
Well, we can appreciate that, and, and, so what I, what I'd like to do is make a motion that, uh, we give him sixty days, um, to come back with, uh, you know, you must get an inspection done.
What inspection are we talking about?
Well, you need to get with, with the administration, to have somebody come out there and see, you know, what, what, what needs to be done. Um, and then in sixty days, if you come back and we're still at the same place, and no progress has happened, and you haven't contacted the right people, then, you know, our, our hand is forced at that point, you know, 'cause we, we've been so long in this, um, you know, we just wanna make sure that we get the progress rolling. And in sixty days, let's see where we're at.
But, Mr. Naza, may I ask you to consider having the city to go out like this week, at that time of permit, and go out and inspect the house as it is right now? 'Cause there's not even a benchmark, he can't even give you benchmarks.
Correct.
He's been building that outside structure for eighteen years, it is unbelievable to me, at some point between in this time period, that you don't have running water or power somewhere in there. That would give you another little haven, another little place for you to be, I mean, I, I, you've obviously worked very hard, it's a nice structure from the outside, um, it would be a beautiful home, but at some point, sometimes an extra little nudge from outsiders to get you going in the right places, good.
Mr. Naza, my, my suggestion, you wanna do sixty days, with the condition that he pull a permit? This week?
This week.
This week?
Yeah.
And, and they arrange for the whatever inspections to incur, and so forth.
Ms. Denise?
Before a permit was being pulled, I would need him to call our office to make an appointment.
Right.
We'd have to come in with his plans, we'd have to look at the scope of work, my inspectors would have to look at it to make sure it's a viable project before they can actually go out and inspect something.
Okay, so, so let's do that, uh, do you understand what she's saying, I, I think Ms. Denise will give you a card and some information, and this week, I want you to contact them and meet with them, okay? And the only reason I'm giving you sixty days is because I still need to figure out what's going on with Restore and FEMA and all that, okay?
The whole thing, whole thing about Restore Louisiana is common, right?
Right, and I.
Many roadblocks, I'm finding the roadblocks after roadblocks after roadblocks.
You gotta be slow. I understand, I'm not trying to put any more roadblocks in your stamp.
No, I understand, I understand, I should let you know my, my, my way of thinking.
And, and I understand.
And the thing is that, to, to finish this off, if I do myself, means I'm the contractor, if I do, I need eighty thousand dollars. Okay, now, of course, it'll be done better, I wish, uh, local people will do it, local plumbers, electricians, local, and of course, of course, I'll pull permits, you know, without permit, no. You'll have to sell my house one day, and I will, eventually, so.
I'm not asking you to have it completed in sixty days.
No, no, I understand that.
I'm asking you to show me some progress and improvements, some major progress and improvements in sixty days.
What kind of progress is looking at?
Well, first step is to get with the city.
Yeah, make an appointment with the city, I would call them tomorrow.
Make an appointment. And I understand, I'm not trying to put pressure on them, because I know their schedule's busy, um, so I can, I can kinda see with the guidelines, if, if they're a month out, then, you know, we'll discuss that in sixty days, but what I want?
I just want a road, roadmap, so I can see.
First, first, first stop, Ms. Denise, and she's gonna give you that information.
Because the reason being, if the roadmap is something that I can do it, I'd rather shut up time, or to Restore Louisiana, buy my land.
Okay.
So, that's the reason.
Well, well, no, no, I get it, let's, let's start with Ms. Denise tomorrow, okay, so I make the motion, uh, of, of, um, sixty days with him meeting with Ms. Denise by, uh, the end of the week, scheduling an appointment, um, to get things rolling, and we'll meet back in sixty days.
Okay, we have, uh, someone to speak, Mrs. Cindy Robertson? Thank you, Mr. Hussein.
You're welcome.
Bye.
Cindy Robertson, six-two-four West Verdines, um, the issue with FEMA, Restore, all that is an ongoing one. Um, we just, Mike, a six-eight mission, just gave our RV to, um, a, two brothers, a veteran, and someone with disability in Ragley, because they are going through the exact same thing, um, the hoops to go through, so, Mr. Naza, if you need any, I'm, I'm pretty familiar with the, the work.
Well, I appreciate it, yes, ma'am, I, that, that's greatly appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Yes.
Okay, please vote.
Mr. Naza?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Abchar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Item seventeen is a resolution granting a variance.
Is that a vote on the amendment, or on the actual? If I, if I gave you sixty days, that, we don't have to vote.
No, that's what I'm voting on.
Okay.
And a little of this, what he was asking?
Okay, gotcha, thank you.
Um, item seventeen is a resolution granting a variance to Regina Primo, four-one-seven Virginia Street, to allow for a fourteen by sixty-four mobile home to be greater than ten years of age, um, two thousand and five, uh, RES forty-two dash twenty-three, um, Miss Ellander's district. Mr. Abraham, you have some information on this mobile home? Um, is this Regina Primo here?
She's moving it from two oh-two Lonnie Smith, where?
It's outside the city limits.
Oh.
It's kind of a shoe person.
Seriously?
I'm here, she doesn't, she doesn't want to, so I get some of her husband.
So you don't have existing skirting on this trailer?
We haven't purchased this trailer yet, we're waiting on approval from y'all, we've gone through the process of, uh, getting approved for them to come out and look at it, take pictures, approve it, now we're here for the variance. So, no, I don't have, it's not mine right now, I have to purchase it.
Is this a hot water heater, there's one of the images I'm listening, is that a hot water heater installed on the exterior side of it?
He, he had, he had a larger one installed, but the ori, original one's still in there.
So that's just?
That's just sitting there, it's not even there anymore, no, it's not even there anymore.
I, I, I'm thinking. All right.
It, it's in very good shape.
Where is it located?
Hmm.
Is it in the city line?
It's on outside the city limits.
It looks like the, underneath that, uh, the unit, some of the insulation, or it's like there's a sag in that underneath stuff.
Only one four-end, they have one cut, and I can fix that, and there was one other little cut, but for the most part, it's all, it's all perfect. I took pictures and submitted them to y'all, and then y'all's inspector came out and took other pictures, I don't know which, that looks like it's all his pictures.
That's from the inspector, right?
That's, yeah, that looks like it's from the inspector. But again, there was only.
There's an image where it's, it's bailed.
Anyone from the public which is to comment?
Y'all get a recommendation from the inspector?
I'm starting to think.
Did anybody get a recommendation from inspector? That's what we used to do, when we passed this law.
Well, he told me he was, he told me he was passing it, and then, it's what he told me, 'cause it was in good shape. I don't know what he left y'all with, what notes he left y'all with, but.
Yes, we get the images.
Okay, cool.
The property y'all are moving it onto, do y'all own that property?
Yes, we do.
Now, are y'all gonna, are y'all gonna live in this?
No, it's either gonna, ninety-nine percent, I got grandson that just turned eighteen, let him move into it, he got his first job, if he holds a job. If not, I'll bring it out, but, so, but, I'm hoping he can get out of my house.
Any other questions from the council?
You know, we have a, the ordinance about the age of these units.
Did I get a motion?
Got a question?
I didn't get a.
Oh, yes, Ms. LaBonne, please, go to the.
Yeah, I just wanna know, where's Virginia, is that, is anybody residing on it, right next door to the, uh, health unit? It's right next, that's big.
I had a, like a nineteen seventy-six trailer on there until the last hurricane took it out, and so it sat there for a while, we kept, we kept the property up and everything.
It's good for the town.
We kept the property up and kept the grass cut and everything, in fact, the inspector said they appreciated, when they, what they say when they saw the, the address, they said that they appreciated that we kept, you know, we, we don't need to, you know, put junk on there, I wanna be able to live in it if I had to. That's my, that's what I'm.
Is this a, an added handling type roof that you put on?
That's a, it's a, it's a metal, it's a metal roof over a, uh, asphalt roof, it is. It helps the, uh, the, what do you call it, the sun, it, it kinda need a little bit of break.
Is that an attached carport, or?
That's a, that, right, that's a, that doesn't come with it, but that's an attached, it's not attached, but it's a large lice carport.
That'll come with that? And so there was a mobile unit there?
At, at, for some, yes, every once, we tore it down in the last four months.
What is it? Because of this residential. Any other questions? I need a motion and a second.
Motion.
Motion failed.
Hmm. So, is it, what's the problem with it, the age of it? So I can, so I can understand.
The age of it.
A two thousand and five mobile home, the age of it. So, you're disenfranchising of, thank you very much, man, that's, two thousand and five mobile home. I, I almost come to more of these meetings, I like this.
I have a question.
They approved a nineteen ninety-eight.
John Ladue, eight twelve North Claremont, South Louisiana, he, he got rid of a seventy-six model trailer. That was here for a while.
And they told me I could.
Over almost fifty years, and now it's a two thousand and five, understand the ordinance, but evidently he was keeping it up, that's all I gotta say.
Thank you.
We have an ordinance that.
You just approved a nineteen ninety-eight mobile home.
Do you want to let me finish, sir?
I apologize, go ahead.
We have an ordinance that states that mobile homes moved in over ten years old, we, we had to establish that because of some of the properties that were moving in here, to hopefully that we can build up our city, so, I'm sorry, but that's, that's the ordinance.
So am I finished, can I respond to that, or no, we're finished? So it's.
Yes, you may respond.
So again, I was told when the city gave me the thing, saying, hey, you can fix it, there was nothing wrong with the mobile home except it was old. They said you have a choice, either fixing it, or tearing it down and putting something else on it within a two-year period. So no problem, you know what, I'll tear it down and get something newer on there.
Are you talking about the, the seventy-six ago?
Yes, yes.
When did you tear it, when did you tear it down?
Three months ago, three months ago.
Two months ago. Two-year timeline.
Three, three months ago?
Like, two, three months ago, but who can afford a brand new trailer to put, I mean, no, we can't afford a brand new trailer, they won't. Seventy, eighty thousand dollars for.
I gotta call them, because I'm gonna talk.
I thought this was ridiculous when you passed that ten-year thing, because we used to have inspectors that go out there and look at trailers, if the trailer wasn't worth moving in the software, we turned them down, you know, that's what the inspector was supposed to be for. I mean, I've been inspection all my life, and I know what I'm supposed to do, you know? Now we pass this thing, and I think software is, is getting in a, in a mode of, of trying to kill the wrong things, you know? We've got cars and trucks and trash all over the place, this man's kept his place up, I know where he's at, you know, this is in my part of town. His place always looks nice, it looked nice when he had the old trailer there. If he was told by an inspector, you know, that he had a choice whether to tear something down and bring something new in, and he opted to do the better thing. I think this is kind of a travesty, you know, I mean, I don't understand the rhyme or reason, you know, we allow some, some people to come in here and, and move mobile homes in here over ten years old, right now, just a few blocks from there, you got two trailers on one lot, and people can't see that. You know, there's only supposed to be one dwelling per lot, but the, the only way you get anything done, I was fixing to come in the city, because they're doing a great job on the cars, you know, but it's by complaint, we can't run the city by complaint. You know, and they wouldn't have got any complaints on this, this, this guy, I mean, one of the few people in that area over there that's trying to keep things up, and you turn him down, I don't understand it, I, I don't understand where it's coming from, there needs to be more research when you're gonna vulnerable something. Have any of y'all seen that trailer physically, or just pictures?
We don't even know where it's located, I still don't know.
It's on Lonnie, you go down twenty-seven.
Guarantee that, tell me.
It's outside of the city limits, you said, though.
Your inspector, your inspector went and looked at it, and he said it was.
And, he didn't have any problems with it?
None.
Who went out and looked at it?
What do the inspectors do, but what they're looking at is more safety, electrical, that kind of thing.
Is it condemnable or is it to be brought in based on the tenure guideline, that's not what they mean by?
Then perhaps we need to be given that information as a council before we, before we come and vote on it, because we don't, we don't have that, I don't have that for forming.
All they're gonna do is decide if it's condemnable or not, and it takes pictures of it, that's pretty much what they're gonna do.
This is against condition, it's, it's, I mean, yes, you need to.
This, this is not against y'all, you understand that, I understand how you feel, but we've been trying to raise the standards of the city. Who, what do you start, I mean?
I think that you just pass one that's.
I can answer that question, I'll show you which stores. It's all gas, we.
Um, Arlene, what would be their, um, course of action?
Come up with a, the, uh, you can come up with a trailer that's within the ten years.
Any other public comments? Yes, again, on the record.
Name's Joshua Bayden, six thirty Alabama Street, you gonna sit across here and listen to this? Y'all give a, 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 a ten-year variance, did the inspector give him a notice that it needed to be a ten-year variance? Whenever he issued the condemnation list on the trailer, gave him the, the, uh, opportunity to take and get another trailer in there, did he give him something, showing that it needed to be within ten years? That's number one, number two issues is, if we're gonna go by ordinances, your own city council member didn't even pull a permit on her main office. No fire marshal submitted, hold on, that's absolutely true, that's absolutely true, so, let me finish, I have three minutes, right?
Your comment, no.
So that's comments, I mean, if we're gonna go by ordinances, our standards apply across the board, not just for the public, it applies to people that, that's making these ordinances, to enforce them on the public.
So you're off the subject, and.
It's not off the subject.
So we'll have a public comment, and you can come back there, okay?
It's within, it's within the rims of the subject.
We're talking solely of four seventeen Virginia Street and this mobile home.
And we're talking about following ordinances and building codes.
We're, we're following what this person requested, the, our granting of variance.
Y'all, y'all have definitely shown me that y'all are the most invasive city council group, it doesn't matter what the public says.
Yes.
Y'all evade every comment or anything, y'all don't wanna address it, you just wanna evade the conversation and get off the subject.
Thank you, Mr. Bayden.
Uh, no problem.
Moving to item number eighteen, resolution awarding RFP for proposals for municipal operation software, resolution forty-three twenty-three, Mayor Danahay.
Thank you, Matt, sure, we have received one bid for your technology, for one year for six hundred fifty-nine thousand two hundred and eighty-four, and the annual recovery would be one bid to six sixty-two, and I would like to say that this is a very, uh, large step forward for our, our software programs.
I feel like the people jump, trying to integrate.
Big undertaking, huh?
Very much so.
Uh, anyone from the public, I don't think anyone signed for item eighteen, anyone from the council? Did I get a motion? It's a move.
Second.
Please vote. Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Abchar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Nazad?
Yes.
Item nineteen? Is a resolution appointing a member to the software municipal fire and police civil service board, resolution forty-four dash twenty-three, Mayor Danahay.
I, we have been received from Miami State University of nominees for this position, I believe y'all have this, uh, in your position. You would be awarded to the, this position in the second, after this nineteen eighty-one, we have the nominees.
Did I get a motion?
A move.
And we need a nomination, or do, uh, we have four names, I don't have the names in front of me.
You do not?
Nope.
The name for this.
We're not on this agenda.
Thomas Bouygues.
Mary Caesar.
I make a move to reappoint you to Thomas Bouygues.
The second? Okay, maybe we'll move to the second.
Yeah, so if you want to.
Gotcha, all right, and so, um, please vote. Ms. Abchar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Nazad?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Item twenty, resolution appointing a member to the software municipal fire and police civil service board, resolution forty-five dash twenty-three, Mayor Danahay. I was told I can make a motion, and I will make the motion to retain this Mary Caesar. It's a move. Please vote. Uh, Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Nazad?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Abchar?
Yes.
Item twenty-one is a resolution awarding a low bid for twenty-two, twenty-three overlay project, resolution forty-six dash twenty-three, Mayor Danahay.
Um, RC Payton won, excuse me, um, RC Payton won this bid for a total base payment of two hundred and ninety-three thousand and thirty-six dollars. Nine hundred and twenty-three thou, thirty-six dollars, I don't know.
Did you say two hundred? I need a motion?
Second.
Please vote. Mr. Nazad?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Abchar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Okay, item number twenty-one A, resolution accepting substantial completion for Maplewood Drive Rehab Phase Two, resolution forty-seven dash twenty-three, Mayor Danahay.
Um, so for the substantial completion, you know, the punch list was a total of fifty-five items, um, uh, I don't know, it seems like a lot, but the majority of these items are just small, you know, ceiling cracks, uh, other things that kinda gets skipped over throughout the process, uh, strapping is one of them, it's one of the bigger items on there. Um, this, the total punch list is for, an estimated two hundred and twenty-three thousand. While the, while the, the paving, I mean, the markings of that is, uh, is sixty-five thousand or so.
Any other motion? It's a move.
Second.
Please vote. Mr. Nazad?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Abchar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Twenty-one B is an introduction of an ordinance authorizing Mayor Danahay to sign a ten-foot wide drainage service tube with DSLD Homes LLC and Bell Savant, subdivision phase two, ordinance one zero four dash twenty-three, Mayor Danahay.
Um, so this drainage service tube is something that, um, I guess had gotten looked over on the contractors standing firm during the construction phase. Um, so the, this particular drainage is, is gonna serve the, uh, the commercial lives that actually run along twelve fifty-six. Um, and this is just accepting it for, uh, so we can maintain it.
It's a move.
Second.
Please vote. Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Nazad?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Abchar?
Yes.
Item twenty-two, I need a motion to consideration of going into executive session to discuss the following claim. It's a move.
Second.
Justin Foster, twenty-two ALB, one five eight six six three. Oh, do we need to vote? Yes, I'm sorry. Please vote.
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Abchar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Nazad?
Can I, I have a few questions on Rita from American Press, do you mind talking? You're too. Yeah. Um, I was gonna video you, but why don't we just talk about it and then? Um, um, what's your name? Um, yeah, so here's, here's how this is gonna go, like, uh, I talked to blah blah, blah blah blah, while the council went into executive session and asked, um, I mainly wanna know, what, what was it talking about, the nineteen seventy-six trailer? I'm tearing it down, but how does that?
We had a trailer, it got destroyed in the hurricane, it got, it got knocked, no, it was not, it got knocked down.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, I just, it was all, weighed a lot, heavy grass cut and everything else, because there weren't, uh.
All they have is that we walked and started, but we chose because of the age to go and have it torn down, then they have, you got two years.
But they didn't care you any.
The, 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 uh, what'd they say about, oh, the, the, uh, ledge posts? You're, you're, all your, all your windows are there, everything's, you know, it looks like it's still there, so you can, you can just walk it back up and you'll be good.
Okay.
So they said that, or, or you can put something.
Place it with a new one, and that's the general.
Well, my thing is if you're going with age, then that's how.
Okay, that's gonna, okay, so, I got, we're gonna have to think about it.
You're not going by condition, you're going by age, that's why I wanted to give that to you, then how come Danahay's being passed?
Yeah, so then. Yeah, okay, so that's your major question?
Yes, she's got a nineteen ninety-eight trailer, and nothing to do with.
No, 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 I, I get it.
And I got a two thousand and five, which is way younger, it's in excellent condition, excellent. So why you pass hers, do not mind if you're, if you're saying you're doing it because of the barriers, then be fair.
The bottom line is, I understand that you're improving the, the city, that, that's.
But is it because they want to improve your, that you're doing that for the one more?
I have.
Because it doesn't prove that.
It's getting improved.
But no, but we're, we know where the other corner is going, does it have a reputation for the nineteen ninety-eight?
It's in the city, it's here.
Yeah, I know, that, that makes a lot of sense.
Well, we, weekly road is one, 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 one road off of I T, off of Bagless, so the Bagless.
How close the word is?
Oh, it's, it's a good, it's a good, it's a good.
Oh, okay, all right. Well, not the same.
Not the same, not the same.
I think you've got some recourse still, I think you can still challenge them, you may have to take it to civil court, because hopefully you don't go before Charlie Shumpert, because he's a piece of junk, just like they are, you know, but I mean, you need to, you need to, you need to pursue it, you know, I go by your place all the time, I don't even like it.
The only thing is is that you can improve that, that trailer that's way younger, and you're using that because of the, yeah, way older.
That law was, that law was bad, I, I spoke against it, they're not getting past it, it's a terrible law, I mean, you can't tell by the age.
Why do you think it's a terrible law?
Because you can't tell by age.
You can't tell by looking the age of the trailer, right, it depends on the condition, is that what you're saying, what are you?
We used to inspect, we used to inspect trailers by condition before they came into city limits, and they quit that, because they don't have time.
No, we paid a hundred and twenty dollars for the inspector to come look at it.
And we paid money, we paid.
We paid a hundred and twenty dollars because it comes looking.
Hundred and twenty dollars?
Yes, and he said that it was, it was fine, and then we paid another fifty to get the bearing.
Hey, man, if, if you let this go, you know, it's, I mean, just fight, you know, you need some help.
Yeah.
It sounds like it'll cost money, 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 that, that's the problem when they start.
It is, we didn't wanna buy the trailer because they didn't, you know, get permission, and who can afford, these, they don't afford to rent, they don't need trailers.
I hear my car, I need some help.
Interest in the mobile home price, or, on the council?
It's gotta be.
Nothing, nothing.
This is, this is a picture of the.
I thought they were, were gonna go in for y'all because it might become real appropriate that, I couldn't understand.
Our other trailer was real appropriate, we wanted.
But that's, you know, we need to.
All of that part of town was done.
No, but I said, rather than her saying it, because of the year.
She doesn't need to, sure, there's a lot there, even happens. So I have one chair, there's two chairs, I need to stick one of the two, I'll put there's one or two, I'll.
Went on the, uh, uh.
I need a motion to reconvene and to execute, uh, from executive, uh, session, it's a move.
Second.
And. Do we need to vote? Uh, uh, Ms. Abchar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Nazad?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy? Yes. Yes, and I'd like to, uh, I'd, I need a motion now to accept the, uh, recommendation to, um, settle, um, this, um, litigation.
To move.
Second.
Please vote.
This is number twenty-three, right?
Yes, resolution approving proposed settlement and authorization.
Uh, Ms. Abshar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Naisat?
Yes.
Ms. Harding?
Yes.
Okay, item twenty-four is public comment, um, three minutes per speaker, only one, only speak one time per item. Um, just wanna remind you that it's public comments, it's not a Q and A session, um, your comments will be heard, um, ask that you honor the three minutes, someone, Thomas, please. And I need a motion to go into public comments. Okay, so we have, um, Bill LaBlanc?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank the, uh, the special department and the ordinance people, looks like we're getting some of the cars out of Sulfur, I brought this back to the mayor. Uh, and the ordinance was originally passed above a list of a hundred and three cars, I took a ride around, I found seventy-three of the same cars there, I brought the list to the mayor. Uh, it looks like in the last couple of weeks, we've covered up some old cars, uh, gotten rid of some old cars, and I know they're working hard at it, I talked to one of the inspectors today. Uh, and that's, that's what I came here to say, uh, what I'm gonna say is, uh, we need to watch what we do up here, you know? You say you wanna improve the city, we got a lot of things out there that we can improve the city, uh, by following the ordinances, we shouldn't be running the ordinance department by complaint. And that's, so far as I'm concerned, that's, that's the way it's been here lately, uh, this gentleman had a nice trailer, you know, come into the city, we got junk all over the place and nobody's doing anything about it, thank you for your time.
Mr. Joshua, uh, David?
I want you, now I'm not up here to, to just constantly just feel like, make y'all feel like I'm smashing, now, I do think that y'all need a pay raise. I'm a hundred percent against a pay raise, give it to yourself on the charter, just not every one of y'all that's up there on your own business. And not at any given time would you ever hand a checkbook to any of your employees and tell them to cut themselves a check for what they feel like they're worth. Not one of you, you wouldn't give it to the police, you wouldn't give it to the fire, they wouldn't, they're not allowed to give themselves a pay raise. So if you wouldn't do it in your own business, don't do it with ours. I have a concern of that, I think it, it leads to, to wrongdoing, I think it leads to mischief, I, I'm gonna agree with it. The other thing is, the transparency, I agree with Miss LaBlanc, you shouldn't be up here running the ordinance department off of complaints. There's things across the board, all around Sulfur that I see on a daily basis, that a blind eye is trying to. If you're gonna force it, enforce it on everyone, don't, don't have privileges for certain ones, and that's exactly what happens here. So I addressed some issues with the mayor, there is a city council member that did not pull permits, we did come to that agreement, I recorded the conversation, if y'all would like to hear it, I'd be glad to let you listen to it. I'm not here to take and cause problems, but I am telling you that if you're gonna be transparent, be transparent for everyone, not yourself. That's all we ask, is that you were elected by us, you work for us, whether I was for you or against you, you still owe every one of us and here the equal right to hear our voice. And to come to a resolution, I didn't feel like I just got that a long ago, when you're trying to raise rates on the sewer and water that's gonna end up hindering the people? You already had your mindset, you didn't even take it into consideration, you already voted on it. That's all I gotta say.
Mr. Danny DePev?
My name is Danny DePev, I live at five zero nine eight Bonning in Sulfur, I'm also the chair for the Home Rule Charter Commission. And, you know, it's funny that, that I came up here tonight, because I wanna take away two of the misconceptions that's in the charter, one of them being that the city council can give themselves a raise. That's one of the things that's incorrect and is not in the charter, what it has in there is the ability for them to look at the compensation in the first three years of the term in which they're in. And they can vote on it by ordinance, that ordinance has to be introduced, and there's a thirty-day period in between, and then it could be approved after that. If that occurs, any change in the salaries of the city council people at City of Sulfur does not happen until the next seated term. So no, the city council cannot give themselves a raise, period, okay, past one misconception that's out there. You know, what's happening is, is the, the opposition out there is obscuring the intended meaning of the communication. By making the message difficult to understand, usually with confusing or ambiguous language. And this is the kind of thing that we get, you know, you get two oh five compensation, the council made by ordinance changes salary of the council. That's only a small portion of what the total section means, and if you take the time to read the charter and sit down with someone who is involved in it, myself or the six other members of the Charter Commission, and you talk to them, you'll see what's in that charter. If you want the true meaning, and you want the true intent, and you want the true reason for what that charter was written for, you'll talk to the people that spent five months putting it together, seven open meetings, seven open meetings, seven open meetings, and took their time and effort, and were nominated by the people in this room, appointed by the people in this room, to do a job. And I'm very proud of that commission and the job that they did and the finished product, which I feel will, will let, will last the test of time and will go on. And the idea that in thirty-nine years, this council has not received any type of, uh, increase in compensation, three hundred and fifty dollars a month for thirty-nine years, two hundred and seventy-eight dollars take over, give or take. I think that's a travesty, I mean, the opposition itself said they need to double the, uh, they need to double the salary. One other thing, you shouldn't be verbally abused for putting a yes sign in your yard. And that happened to an individual on Saturday at one of the local restaurants, and I called that person, I thanked them for putting a yes sign in his yard, and I also thanked him and apologized to him for being verbally abused in a public place. And that should not be happening, I can take it myself, I've been abused on Facebook, I've been messaged on Facebook, challenged on Facebook, come to my house, gonna come to my job and going to, uh, put me out of work. All because I have a s- a different opinion than someone else out there, and I will fight to make sure that this charter is done, it's a good, it's a good product, it's a good document, and I stand by it, and the people who put it together stand by it, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. DePev. Uh, we have Ms. Cindy Robertson.
Cindy Robertson, sixty-four Westford, I'm, uh, here in Sulfur. Um, the neighborhood businesses bring community together, my grandmother had a little grocery store that she owned and ran for years, and she gave credit to people who needed food, she spread the local news, it was a neighborhood grocery store. Small businesses like hers that serve a neighborhood and are located in that neighborhood build community, they allow people to begin with a relatively low investment, provide services or products to their community, enhance the sense of connection that we are sorely missing in our civic lives today, and improve the lot of life, in life, of everybody involved. And they are known i- in Sulfur as neighborhood commercial, at present, present which are allowed to be in mixed residential zoning, which typically are middle to lower in, income neighborhoods. But at the upcoming Sulfur Land in Use meeting on the twenty-first, there's a resolution to remove the neighborhood commercial use from the mixed neighborhood approved zoning definition. Currently, mixed, the neighborhood commercial in mixed residential zoning includes businesses like convenience stores, laundromats, gift shops, flower shops, and the, hopefully, MICA six-eight mission office and, which serves the low-income and unhoused people in our community. I've been working with the city to resolve issues that they have with us doing that and moving an office in there and have been assured that neighborhood commercial is appropriate for that area and for that, for our business to use, and now they're gonna change the zoning on us. The problem with that definition is that the change in definition, once a property is owned business, then somebody two houses down from that, the, of, the lot in between them can be purchased, and because the lot next to it is business, a business that has absolutely nothing to do with serving the neighborhood, will be able to come in there and say, hey, they have, they're a business zone next door, we should be able to get a business zone, it's obvious that it's allowed here. Those of us who live in mixed residential zoned areas are as concerned about our neighborhoods as those who live in the more restricted neighborhood zone residential only. We may have less income, but we value our connections to each other, we welcome the neighborhood commercial business who serve us, employ us, and give us a way to better ourselves and our community. And I am asking the council to rethink and the administration to rethink the upcoming resolution being brought forward next Monday, Monday, and remove it from the agenda, thank you.
Thank you. Cindy Robertson, thank you. Any other public comments, you don't have any?
She'll briefs on three sixteen to Conne Street in Sulfur, um, since the reference was made to the, uh, those of us who oppose the charter, I do need to speak up. Excuse me, first let me say verbally abusing anybody for any stance on this charter is wrong, and, uh, I'll post something about that on Concerned Citizens for Sulfur Facebook page tomorrow, because that's not acceptable. I had a business person approach me and say they would put a sign out for us, but wanted me to know that there were yes signs, and I said, that's absolutely great, he said, I want people to talk about it, and I said, absolutely great. So when I see the yes signs, I'm good with that, people need to read that charter, they need to discuss that charter, and they need to figure out what they believe about what's in it. I don't, I, I'm, sometimes I know I'm very forceful about what I think and what I believe, but my main goal is that people know and they make up their own minds. I, I'm gonna take just a second, I talked to the mayor one time and he's very much against term limits and thought he could, you know, explain that to people and they would understand, and I was telling a councilperson, I'd love to get him on video so that he could do that. She said, well, I didn't know you were, uh, against term limits, I said, oh, no, I'm very much for term limits, but I'm more for people getting both sides of every single argument that's out there. So on the charter itself, on the salaries, uh, I did put that sentence in there, I, from the quote from the charter, the council made by ordinance said salaries of the council, change the salaries, whatever, how exactly the wording goes. And if, if there are no term limits in that charter, they discussed it and decided against it, they never told the citizens. So if, since there are no term limits, you all could be here for the next twenty years, uh, Ms. Ellander will have been here twenty years this, into this term, so that's not unlikely. So if the charter is voted in in October and the next, uh, city council in twenty-twenty-six, by ordinance sets the salaries for the council, that council that sits at that time will not get that raise, but the next one will, if you all are in that city council, you will have voted yourself that raise. That's all I have to say, thank you for listening, thank you for that, and cheer me for you all.
Anyone else?
James Ladoo, H twelve, North Flavorn, yeah, I live out of there with my twin brother. I commend y'all on what y'all are doing, like Josh said, there does need to be transparency, we did have a trailer come through here that was a nineteen-ninety-eight that y'all approved, but an oh-five, only thing I seen that wasn't, uh, on the trailer, it might have needed some skirting or something, but like Bill said, and they, they were keeping that land up, another thing was the house that we, y'all approved to go from res- from business to residential. In the same neighborhood, two meetings ago, y'all denied a guy to go from, uh, business to residential. And how can that be fair, now you gonna have one corner lot on there that's gonna be residential and the rest of that is business, that's not fair, that's not being transparent. We need to look at all of that when we do that, that's all I gotta say.
One was two oh three and the other was two seventeen, like three houses down.
Anyone else to speak?
My name's Regina Primo, I live at six fifteen Eaton Street, and I'm a little confused, I need a little piece of mind, because you said it's because of the age, but then you passed something younger, you didn't even consider that the shape that it was in.
Something older?
It was something older.
So let her speak.
I had a hun- I paid a hundred and three dollars for an inspector to come out, I would, I mean, I guess I was wrong, but I was thinking, okay, if he looks at it and he inspects it, that's his job to inspect, to make sure that it's good enough to come into the City of Sulfur, and he did approve it, yes, there was a tear underneath the belly, that's nothing to fix, we fixed that a million times on our own trailer, we had to cut it, fix plumbing and that. So I don't understand if you're gonna follow the rules on that, that rule, then how come that one was passed, but mine was not and it's even younger? That's, that's not, then why there's a rule there for that, for that then?
Anyone else? That concludes public comments at this time, council, comments? Administration, go ahead. Administration? Um, I would like to, um, say a couple of things, first, thank you for being patient with me, as you can tell, I was a little rusty behind here, coming into the seat, Drew Ellander needs to retain her position. But I'm, I'm, I'm warming up, uh, thank you for your patience there, um, nothing regarding the council and the agenda. We lost someone very near and dear to us in this community, Ben Terry, please keep his family in your prayers. And, um, school has started, be mindful, be patient, uh, traffic and our darling's starting off, and, um, we thank you as a community for your, your voice, your support and non-support, you have that right, and we just thank you for your presence, um, here, tonight. So have a good evening, everyone, thank you, this meeting is adjourned.